This was sitting there, so I don't know.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call together this city council meeting of the Richfield City Council. It is 7:00 PM on January 9th, 2024. At this point, if you are able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the open forum. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting, and I have a few reminders about open forum. If you are someone who's calling in, you can call into the open forum by dialing 1-415-655-0001. You would use webinar access code 2631-556-1505 and password 1234. At this point, I don't see anybody who's called in, but they may do so while we go through the -- I've got a couple of comment cards here. So if you're here in person, we'd like you to sign in and state your name and address. I'll begin timing after that, and you'll have three minutes. Many people wish to make their opinions heard, so please respect that time limit. And we're all neighbors here and want to provide a safe environment to state our opinions about municipal policies, so please stick to issues. This is not a forum to discuss individuals or past judgments. The council will be listening and taking notes, but we will not be responding to the comments. This open forum is designed to hear from you but not be a debate. If there are questions that come up, they'll be addressed at the next council meeting, or staff will reach out and discuss the questions with the residents. So thank you for that. I still don't see anybody calling in, so I have two comment cards here, so we'll start off with Kathleen Balaban.
Good evening, and my comments this evening are twofold. One, I would like us to look at the consent calendar, and I know that we're going to go ahead and authorize the Sun Current as our newspaper. And I, as a citizen who gets that, I think that we're not utilizing it to the extent that we can. I don't see really any articles from Richfield. The event calendar on there is pretty much Bloomington. We don't really contribute much, and I'd like us to do so because more of -- I read it. Everybody reads it, but as far as I'm concerned, it looks to be more Bloomington. And I'll leave that. You already have comments from me on other issues on the consent calendar. What I really want to talk about is the legislation that you guys are going to go breakfast with and discuss, the 2024 priorities. What troubled me with this is you had a work session two weeks ago, or thereabouts, you know, the last city council meeting, and then one was canceled. So on 12/13, you were presented at a workshop with your priorities. And I have a copy here, and I have what was discussed and/or changed. My problem with this, or my issue with this, is I'm not represented here at all. Nobody asked me what my legislative priorities are for my city and my livability. I've come to you on multiple occasions about the air quality in my neighborhood and about businesses polluting the air, such as laundromats, you know, utilizing uncentered projects. And your response to me was, "We couldn't do anything because it's legislature," you know? Legislature, this legis -- What I see here is staff only. I don't see anything in here from citizens about what we would like to see changed. I also don't see anything added from you guys. It's a workshop. They showed you, "This is what we're going to do for 2024," and you guys said, "Scritch, scritch, scritch," but you didn't add anything. You did not -- I didn't see one thing in here that you added, not one of you, for your ward or your constituents. You didn't add anything. You just said, "Okay, whatever they say, we're going to do." Next time that you -- and then you put it out, city staff, I can't say you, because right now you're being not utilized to your level of expertise either. What I'm guessing that -- what I'm trying to say is, it was on public social media, I got it on community page or whatever, that you're going to breakfast. It was also noted here in the minutes or in the agenda that you're going to have a breakfast meeting. So what it really states is it was publicly noted in a workshop, I mean, online, that you're going to have this before you even elected to say, "This is what we're going to do." Again, communication, lack of, or poor timing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Santwana Dasgupta.
Good evening and a Happy New Year to all of you, too. I'm a little nervous, so hopefully I'll get through this in the timeframe. My name is Santwana Dasgupta, and I live at 6951 First Avenue South, Richfield. I'm also here as a member of the Richfield community-based organization called the Richfield for Equity in Public Safety. As you know, our focus has been on the results that we found when we analyzed the data that are on routine low-level traffic stops in Richfield and found that the percentage of people of color, especially those who are black, are stopped at a significantly higher rate than those who are white. We have been raising this issue for over two years, and to date, we are disappointed that these findings have not, to the best of our knowledge, been addressed. We have now pulled the data two times, and the findings continue to remain the same, and that is that the percentage of black people stopped for routine low-level traffic stops is far higher than the percentage of black people living in Richfield. Conversations, as you also know, are now happening across the country on how these stops often escalate into horrific endings, and several cities have either enacted laws to stop or reduce them, or are actively engaged in conversations on how to deal with this routine police action, where the data is showing that little -- it does little or nothing to reduce overall crime, increases people of color's distrust in the police, and according to statements made in our own meetings with the city and the police department, takes time away from other policing work that needs to get done. We have shared some of the research findings with all of you. While we have had several meetings with the city and the PD, and we are thankful that the conversations are continuing, we do not believe that this data showing high levels of inequity is being taken seriously. We are told that the real numbers can only be tallied after a decision is taken internally on each of the stops conducted, but then those numbers are not shared with us. At this time, to be honest, it feels like we have run into a brick wall, and absolutely no progress on this issue is being made. We are here to ask for three things. First, as concerned citizens, while we sincerely appreciate the work of the Richfield Police Department, we also believe that this is a ticking time bomb. We need the city council to be proactive, to either prove that, yes, we have an issue here, or no, a deeper dive is showing that there is no issue, and here are the steps taken to show that this data analysis done by reps is out of context. Number two, should the data analysis show that there is indeed a problem, then we need -- we want the city council to advocate for change at the county and at the state levels. We need to advocate for changes in the law that will make it illegal for routine low-level stops to be conducted. We do not need to wait until changes are made at the top levels of the state, as bottom-up leadership is often more effective in the implementation of systemic changes. And number three, it is, if our analysis is correct, we request the city council to work with the city and the police department to review their approach towards low-level traffic stops and take appropriate actions that address this inequity. The new system provides a lot of data, and we request the council to work with the PD to conduct its own analysis to determine if they are in sync with our findings or not. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and we look forward to continuing working with you to resolve this possible inequity in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is present that wishes to speak? Did anyone call in? City Clerk Leslie?
No, there hasn't been.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you to everyone who spoke tonight.
Mayor, I have three that --
Oh, that's -- thank you for the reminder. Yes, we had several people that sent in comments, so I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez to read those. Thank you for the reminder.
So the first email is from Lori Bars at 6508 Stevens Avenue. Dear council members, the property at 10166 Street has been a neighborhood ISO for at least the last decade. We, as a neighborhood, did our best to convince the city --
Excuse me, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'll start again. Dear council members, the property at 10166 Street has been a neighborhood ISO for at least the last decade. We, as a neighborhood, did our best to convince the city that a five-story apartment building did not fit into our single-family neighborhood, but finally, we were forced to relent. And now, yet again, we are being asked to give the owner another year before building on this site. If you must vote yes to allow an extension, I would ask that you make it contingent on the immediate removal of the dilapidated buildings on the premise. They may invite vagrants, fire, and vermin. They obviously are urban blight and should have been removed long ago. Thank you. Lori Bars. And then this other email that I got is from Alex Astmas, and he is at 6401 Harriet Avenue. Respected council members, I would like to urge the council to reject the request for granting an additional one-year extension of land use approvals for a planned unit development at 10166 East. Policy of one-year terms for project approvals ensures momentum in development projects and prevents stagnation of valuable urban space. Repeated extensions can set a precedent for laxity in project timelines, potentially deterring other developers who adhere to their schedules. It also sets precedent of the leniency offered by council, which could be taken advantage of in the future. While acknowledging the challenges faced by the developer, including increased labor and material costs and high interest rates, frankly, these challenges are part of the development landscape for all developers, including those who have executed their plans. Extending the deadline to January 2025 may alleviate pressure on NB, but it also prolongs the community's weight for much-needed housing and commercial space. Furthermore, the unmet condition of paying the processing fee raises concerns about the developer's commitment in good faith as well as their financial readiness. The site's changes from a 31-unit project in 2018 to the current 80-unit proposal reflects our evolving vision for the area. However, this evolution also demands timely execution. The repeated delays undermine strategic goals of revitalizing and capitalizing on the investment made along 66th Street. If the challenges faced with PLH weren't a telling lesson, it seems as if we are now allowing for similar challenges to take place again. We must uphold the integrity of our policies and the expectations we set for development in our city. Denying this extension could send a strong message that while we are supportive of development, we are equally stringent about commitments and timelines. And then the third email that we received is from Donna Klisch, and it's at 6641 First Avenue South. Good morning. I'd like to submit comments on the proposed extension of the North Bay Development at 10166 East, please. Exactly how many extensions is the city of Richfield going to grant to the developer for the North Bay project? The neighborhood has been sitting through meeting after meeting on the site since back in 2018. Every time the project comes up for discussion, the city shows pretty much no consideration for what the surrounding neighbors have to say on the project and approves most everything that the developer wants. There was a fire last year in the smaller house on Stevens on the site caused by trespassers, resulting in the teardown of the building. Recently, there have been heavy police activity at this site with multiple squads and officers responding. The windows on the building are now boarded up with signs posted because of what I hear is due to trespassers. Once again, the remaining buildings are slowly falling apart and are both an ISO and a safety risk. What is the developer's plan to address these issues? I get that the economy has changed, but it has changed for all of us and not just the developer. Why am I not attending the city council? Quite frankly, why should I? Neighbors share their thoughts on why this development is not a good fit and is too big for the site, and then boom. Once again, the city council will grant an extension to the developer, which will most likely happen again next year, once again, when they still haven't started work, and once again, with no communication to all the surrounding neighbors on project status from the council members that represent our area. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And it doesn't look like anyone else has called in. All right. Thank you, and thank you for everyone who participated in the open forum. Next, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes of the city council work session of December 12th, 2023, and the city council regular meeting of December 12th, 2023.
I'll move approval of the minutes?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any corrections or comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Small correction. My name is misspelled on page two.
Thank you. Councilmember Haefer O'Leary?
I had emailed this in as well, but just to clarify, I did not say that staff spent too much time on the speed limits. Just, I thank staff for their work on the speed limits, so if we could cut that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have those two corrections. Is there anything else? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. One of the things that we can do with the consent agenda is that council members may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar and placed on the regular agenda for council discussion and action. And so, before we approve the agenda, I would like to ask that we pull Item D off of the consent agenda and put it onto the regular agenda for discussion. So if there's no objection, I would like to approve the agenda with that change. So if there's someone who would like to make the motion?
I will move the agenda modified as described.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All right. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved the agenda as modified. Next, we'll turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez for the consent agenda, which will include everything except Item D, which has now been laid over for after the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, Item A, consider approval to designate an acting city manager for 2024. Item B, consider the designation of mayor pro tempore for 2024. Item C, consider representatives to serve as the 2024 liaisons to various local, regional, and state organizations and city boards and commissions. Item E, consider approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Blessed Trinity Catholic School located at St. Richards Catholic Church, 7540 Penn Avenue South, for their 2024 Snowball Dance, taking place February 3rd, 2024. Item F, consider the approval of an agreement allowing -- Richfield Police -- I'm sorry, Richfield Department of Public Safety to accept grant monies from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant JAG program. Item G, consider the approval of the Response Sustainability Grant. This new grant is awarded to public health departments and tribal health agencies via the Minnesota Department of Health, based on funding provided by the Minnesota State Legislature. Item H, consider a resolution designating an official newspaper for 2024. Item I, consider resolutions designating official depositories for the city of Richfield for 2024, including the approval of collateral. Item J, consider approval of the purchase of 11 Ford SUV police interceptor vehicles for public safety from the McGovern Municipal Headquarters for $498,743.85 plus destination tax title and license fees, and authorizing the city manager to approve contract changes of $275,000 without further city council consideration. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar. Thank you.
I'd move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
And to clarify, that's Items A through C and Items E through J.
Yes, with Item D remaining.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right, then we'll call the question. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved the consent calendar. Next on our agenda would be consideration of any items that were removed from the consent calendar, and I had asked that Item D be removed, and that is consideration of adoption of a resolution granting an extension of land use approvals for a planned unit development at 10166 Street East. In January 2022, North Bay Companies, the applicant, received council approval for a mixed-use building that included 80 residential units and approximately 2,685 square feet of commercial space within a five-story building to be constructed at 10166 Street East. Approvals typically expire after one year unless extended. Due to the economic climate, on February of 2023, the approvals were extended for one year until January of 2024. Now, the applicant is in need of a second extension. A combination of labor and materials costs, plus high interest rates, continue to make the project difficult to finance. The developer is exploring several options, including bringing in a partner to help finance the project. The developer has continued to make progress, and the full building permit has now been approved. If an extension is not granted, the applicant would be required to begin the land use approval process anew. Staff continues to support the proposed development as an investment that capitalizes on the major investment made along 66th Street and the production of needed housing in our community. So before I make a motion with an amendment, did staff want to add anything?
No, I do not have anything to add. Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions, though.
All right. Thank you. So I would move to adopt a resolution granting a one-year extension of land use approvals for a planned unit development to 10166 Street East, adding a condition requiring the removal of the vacant buildings on the site within 90 days.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
Yeah, two questions. One, I completely understand the -- and share the community concern about vacant buildings with how long this has gone on. Just knowing that when developments face unexpected additional costs, they at times will come back to us asking for more assistance. Does this add a significant enough cost to either -- to have them remove it before construction starts? Do we know if that will add significant cost and what the actual impact of that will have? I mean, I don't disagree with the intent of that motion, but don't want them coming back with an additional $100,000 they needed to hire a demolitions team.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Good question. Will it add expenses that they could come back for in the future? The amount that has been pledged to this development at this point is the maximum amount that would be available under the TIF note. It's the two -- just shy of 2.7 million. And for each period of time in which the development doesn't start, the amount that will actually be available likely goes down. There isn't the ability, unless we were to look to our spending plan dollars or something like that, we don't have additional funds through the TIF district to pledge to this. I did have a conversation with the developer. Although bids for demolition are coming in very high, that's the reason that they apparently have not come down. He did believe that he could get those buildings down within 60 to 90 days.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other question, if I can just do that right away. I know oftentimes you're trying to summarize quite a lot of detail in a short staff report. Can you say more about the sentence, "The developers continue to make progress"? Just that it seems like a clear concern is, this sounds like the same conversation we had last year. Is it going to be any different in a year from now? And if you could offer some insight from behind the scenes, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Behind the scenes, the developer has submitted their full building plans. So those have been reviewed. That has taken -- that took a lot of time this year. That's probably six months' worth of time on staff's end, going back and forth with the developer and their architect to make sure that plans are ready for a building permit. So the building permit is ready now. What we are waiting on is the developer to secure his construction financing. The exceptionally high interest rates, which we are all hoping are starting to tick down a little bit, are what is causing the delay here. Banks do not have the capital on hand, and the interest rates are making that very challenging. So could this happen again? You know, I don't know what the market is going to do. What I can tell you is that the TIF district, there's a time -- statutory timeframe for expenditures that need to happen once the district has been created. That expires in March of 2025. So if this project is not moving forward, and the developer has not spent those funds to do things like tear down the building, construct the underground parking, there will not be TIF assistance to help the project, and I cannot see a way that this project could move forward without that. I also want to mention, although you didn't specifically ask this question, in a lot of cases where we have a developer, the HRA owns the land, and we're selling it as part of the development agreement. In this case, it's a privately held parcel. So there isn't actually any obligation for the developer, the property owner, to do anything other than register the buildings as vacant and keep them secure. So while we would all like to see this move forward as quickly as possible, and in other cases, we have said, "We will not renew your contract under the HRA. We're going to look for another developer," that's really not an option here. They own the property. It's privately held.
Thank you. That was my last question, is what is the actual impact if we were to deny this? And I have certainly heard from other communities, I mean, we just have less undeveloped land sitting around, but have heard from other communities where that has sat for many, many years, and it's -- it can be a big concern. So I appreciate that context as well.
All right. Other comments, or otherwise I can speak to the motion that I made. I took all of that into consideration, but I do think it is a valid concern from the residents that those buildings are sitting there empty, and this is a way that we have leverage to get those buildings brought down because it's a safety hazard. We've already had a fire, and we don't want anyone else to get injured or hurt. And so I do think it's been sitting there for a long time, and I do think those buildings do need to come down. I think that that would add some incentive to make it happen faster, and I don't think it's going to hold up the development. I really do want to see this development move forward because I do think we need the housing, and it's a good proposal. I also, you know, don't want to have the whole thing start over, and then people say, "Oh, we have to have 150 units there," because we've already increased it from in the low 40s up to 82, and I don't think we need to go any higher density. So I think those things are important. So I think those things are important. So that was why I asked to have it pulled, because I do think it was a legitimate concern that the residents brought up about having the buildings removed. And I agree with Councilmember Wayland, I don't want to hold it up, and I want it to move forward, and I wish that the developer is here this evening, but that's not the case, so we can't ask his or her opinion of that. Couple of questions that came up. One of the contingencies on here is to have the application fee paid, and I believe you told me, Director Palman, that that has now been paid.
That's correct. Application fee has been paid.
All right. And then before the meeting, one of the residents asked me, even though we're not talking about TIF here, if you could just summarize what happened with TIF in this agreement, what's been approved?
Sure, Mayor, members of the council. The HRA has an agreement with the developer that if the development is created and qualified expenditures are made through tax increment, we will reimburse the developer up to $2.685 million over the course of the life of the district, which I cannot remember off the top of my head. The longest that could be is 26 years. That clock has already started ticking. I think it's probably about 23 years now.
All right. Further comments, questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I support the motion as amended. I guess I do just want to say, it pains me to make a project that's financially struggling more expensive, especially to Councilmember Wayland's comments, as we're subsidizing it. But it does seem like, as Director Palman said, one of their duties is to, of their limited duties they are required to do is to keep those buildings secure, and even that is not quite happening. And I do think, given the context, that we've been very flexible about increasing the density of the development, admittedly against the neighborhood concerns to allow it to be more financially viable. We have subsidized it, we have given a previous extension. I don't like that we're in this situation, but I do think it's reasonable to ask that they demolish the buildings, so I support this.
All right. Is there any further conversation? Councilmember Wayland?
I'll just add my comment. I don't think anyone who's heard me talk about developments will be surprised that I have some healthy skepticism of developers at times, but the fact that they, this particular development, developer, has had two other successful developments in our community. I have more confidence and appreciate staff sharing the steps they have continued to take. I don't feel like they're just dragging us along. And so I also support the overall project and think that while there's a bunch of parts of this process that we may wish had gone differently in terms of the decision before us, the impact of a yes versus a no feels very clear, and the route to move forward is through approving this. And I don't have strong feelings about the amendment made, but if there's support for that among the rest of the council, then I'm okay with that.
All right. Any other comments or questions before we take the vote? All right. The motion before us is to adopt a resolution granting a one-year extension of land use approvals for a planned unit development at 10166 Street East, adding a condition requiring the removal of the vacant buildings on the site within 90 days. County Attorney Teigen, is that all correct as far as parliamentary procedure? All right, so all in favor?
Sounds good.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have passed that. Next, we will move on to other business, and so I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary for consideration of the adoption of the city's legislative priorities for 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Annually, the City of Richfield's legislative priorities have been compiled in collaboration with various city departments and stakeholders. The priorities are a list of policy positions and measures the city supports at the state and regional level and bonding requests for city projects. This list of priorities is a summary document to help steer the city's legislative advocacy and outreach in the coming year. City staff has pulled together a proposed list of legislative priorities for the city council to review. Based on prior discussions with the League of Minnesota Cities and Richfield's contracted lobbyists, it is recommended that the city's legislative platform include three to five top priorities, that all items are within the scope of the city's purview, and that the city council adopt the legislative priorities formally. Those proposed top legislative priorities are to introduce and support a bonding request for $10 million to supplement the city's estimated local cost share for the upcoming Nicollet Avenue reconstruction project in partnership with Hennepin County, to introduce and support limits on local contributions, ownership, and major maintenance responsibility for county and state projects. Current cost participation requirements related to trunk highways and county projects place too high a burden on cities like Richfield. And finally, to support increased accountability for emergency medical services. We'll present the city's legislative platform to elected representatives at the annual legislative breakfast, scheduled from 7:45 to 9:15 a.m. on January 12th. The representatives will have time to ask staff follow-up questions about the city's platform and present their priorities for the 2024 legislative session. And I believe staff have some additional comments.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. We did make several changes to the legislative platform based on your feedback at that December 12th work session, and I'll just briefly review some of them. We removed the language supporting clarification on the SRO, use of force legislation. We clarified the language regarding modernizing funding for supporting public communications, and we added support for additional funding for sustainability and recreation assets. At that meeting, there was also a request to do research on the North Star Act, to consider incorporating that into the platform for this year. Basically, the North Star Act is to create, it would be support for the state of Minnesota to become a sanctuary state similar to California or Illinois. I was able to meet with several supporters. Councilmember Troutman organized a meeting. It was very helpful to meet with them and to learn more about it. I've also had a discussion with our lobbyists and also Metro Cities. However, it is, there's a lot to the proposed bill. We haven't had time as staff to thoroughly vet the legislation. Also, we haven't had time to bring it to you all for discussion. So I propose that we continue to do the research and that we bring it to you at a future work session for potential inclusion by amendment into the platform, or to consider for next year's platform. I've been really candid with you all that staff have a lot on their agenda right now and in the first quarter. So I would prefer that we wait, we'll have the work session this coming year, but we wait to include it in the next year's platform. But of course, if the majority of the council wants to include it yet this year for this year's session, we would look at trying to schedule that sooner, the work session. And I'm available for questions.
All right. So is there a motion?
Yes, I will move that we adopt the proposed legislative priorities for 2024. I'll just read the whole thing. It says, "By adopting the legislative platform formally, the city council shows these priorities are in the best interest of the community and provides increased visibility for the issues."
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, now it's open for discussion? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. As even some community members pointed out today, you know, the process of how we come to our legislative priorities is evolving, and I do really appreciate you taking the time. And as we, and maybe there was some miscommunication about whether or not, I understand there's a preference to include this potentially next year. I know there are a lot of community members for whom this impacts significantly. One in four of our households in Richfield don't speak English as their, as their first language, and we're a city that impacts this, and we're a city that also does a lot of really good work in this space. In a lot of ways, I think we're a model for the state, but that the state legislation actually provides more cover, more continuity, and more clarity for the city. So I know there are a lot of people that would have wanted to speak today, and were hoping to have an opportunity to do that, and thought there would be an opportunity at a work session this year. So I understand there's still some question about whether or not it could be included this year or next year, but my request to staff that I know is stretched thin, and I know it's a significant ask, but also to my colleagues who also are busy and work hard for the stipends that they get, if we could make space to hear this and consider whether or not this could be a priority, included in our priorities this year, that'd be my, that'd be my request.
So if I'm understanding, you're hoping that we can have a work session in the future and consider putting it onto the agenda at some future?
Yes. Initially, we had discussed amending, proposing an amendment here to our legislative priorities, but recognizing how short our timeline is, a compromise is that we, instead of hashing it out here on the dais, which is not very, is kind of clumsy and efficient, and not efficient to have a work session where we could give staff, not put staff on the spot or council members on the spot, but make time to do that this year.
All right. Is there any comments or questions? And I know staff also wanted to weigh in. Councilmember Wayland?
I guess I am supportive of the idea, as someone who in my day job also works on some proposed legislative ideas. My, my understanding is that it's already, I mean, session hasn't started, but that it's already kind of late. And so I don't know our work session schedule, but I feel like if we wanted to do that and have a serious impact on session this year, that would need to be in the next month or so, which that is the piece that feels like more of a stretch.
I agree.
So I guess I would ask staff, like, is that both city manager, in terms of our work session schedule, but also, I am guessing Chief Henthorn, who's in the audience here, would be the one that, the relevant director that would be speaking to it, is that a realistic timeline for both the meeting but also the prep and research that needs to happen?
City Manager Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. It would be hard. I mean, we, again, majority of the council wants us to do it, and we will, we will work for it, work to get it done, but it would probably have to be an additional work session that's scheduled. We currently have our work sessions scheduled, and I think the first open one is like the second meeting in March. But I do want to clarify, my request to look at it for next year does come with a commitment to bring it to a work session this year. So we, I wouldn't wait till the next year to have the work session, but it just wouldn't have to be done quickly.
All right, other comments, questions? Councilmember Troutman?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. My one request, and I know, I know it's not an insignificant ask, and I just want to recognize Councilmember Wayland's observation and City Manager Rodriguez's observation that it's a significant ask. Also, it was, there was some miscommunication, but this is something that was timely raised prior to the work session, and so I know it's a little inefficient, but I'm here advocating because I think it's important, it's a priority, and this is, so that's my ask, recognizing, you know, you know when you're making a big ask, I am, but I'm not going to not make that, that ask and make that consideration for our community members, especially in light of the fact that I think we would have had an opportunity to hear from them tonight. And I think it matters to them, talking to clergy here in our community, too. It's something that's a priority for a community, and it would be great to have their voice heard. And as immigration issues, it's always easy to push them for another year and push them a year out. I'm not saying not to cast aspersions on anybody, it's just, it's a function of this kind of policy, and so that's my, that's my ask tonight.
And I guess I'll, I would be fine if we scheduled a work session and discussed it. It sounds like if we could do so in March, that would be coming up. Is that timeline amenable to you?
I think that would, that would make it not functional for, so this is, it would, it would be something that we'd have to, as a council, decide we'd make, we'd make space and we'd make time for probably in the next month.
So like scheduling a separate meeting?
Yes.
All right. Comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland?
Yeah, I guess to folks who I envy a little bit, who are less intimately aware of legislative goings-on, there's committee deadlines that I don't think have been finally set, but are likely to be like mid-March. And so that is, the things won't all be done by then, of course, they go through May, but yeah, I think Councilmember Troutman is correct in the timeline we would need. Councilmember Troutman, to clarify the miscommunication, it sounds like there are community members who had planned to come and speak on this tonight, but were told that there would be a work session coming up instead. That would be more appropriate for them to speak at?
That's correct.
Okay. I guess I would also support a work session within the next month. I recognize that that is an additional ask, and that, also appreciate that the, what am I trying to say? The research may not be ready, but I think at the very least to hear from community members that wanted to speak to this point, that it's important we find a way to make space for that.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
So we don't, I mean, we don't set our work session calendar by motion, so I'm just wondering what, is it just sort of, we want like a thumbs up, thumbs down, and then we vote on the item, or is the city manager looking that we like specify something in our motion or something like that?
Okay, City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. Just a couple of things. I'm confused about the community members. I got an email from one of the people that was in the meeting and said that community members would be here tonight. I did nothing to dissuade them from being here tonight, so I'm a little confused about that. And then the second thing is, yes, I'm looking for direction on whether council feels this is urgent and wants to potentially include it and amend it for this platform, or if they are comfortable waiting and having a work session during this year, but to look for inclusion for the next platform. Just some further context, this bill was presented last session and did not get a hearing. And also, when I spoke to Metro Cities to find out if they had more information about it, they had not heard from any other cities about the, about the bill. And then finally, a lot of the goals of the bill is to have a very clear line between what local law, that local law enforcement does not support federal immigration control or enforcement. And we already have a position on that as a city, and we do not. So it is, it is, it does clarify it further. I mean, Councilmember Troutman is correct in that the bill would be for all of Minnesota. So I understand the goals of it are aligned with city values, but locally, we are already doing much of what the bill is hoping to achieve with the legislation.
I had a comment, but go ahead. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Well, I guess I just want to say, I personally support the idea of the bill. I don't know much about it, other than that the city manager mentioned that this was on the radar. I am wondering, I guess my concern, particularly with the sort of like aggressive drop everything and get this in, is I am not totally clear on the nexus of this to the city government and the, like, it being within our purview. I definitely appreciate why it's relevant and important to some of our residents, to a lot of our residents, but I'm just wondering, Councilmember Troutman, if you could just lay that out? And then particularly clarify if your desire is that this become one of our three to five top priorities, or simply added to the list, like, under the public safety item?
I'd be, I'd be open to both, either it being under public safety or be included in one of our five priorities. It's important to cities because, like Councilmember Rodriguez mentioned, there, it provides a level of clarity, not just, not just for government, but also for city community members. We still have a lot of folks for whom accessing municipal government is, is a high risk, and something that's not done creates public safety problems, which again, our chief of police, our police, our city have, have taken good steps moving forward, but to ensure that what we do here is communicated to our, to our residents, is enforced at the county level, which it is not always enforced at the county level and at the state level. It really is a priority for cities, particularly cities that are like Richfield, that have a lot of families that are mixed status. status, that have a lot of families that, that this impacts.
Okay. And just to illustrate, again, I'm not, I don't know much about immigration issues specifically. So an example of that might be like if there were a domestic abuse situation, but because there's an undocumented person in the household, they don't call the police and don't report that because of fear of immigration impacts?
That's, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a perfect example of what, in a, in a family like that, where there might be a mixed status, where, where an individual, you know, so we, family needs to be safe. The family doesn't want to lose their sole breadwinner. And what that outcome is, Richfield could have a policy, the county could have a different policy than Richfield has. And what, and then counting on, on our residents, many of whom have a language barrier, to understand the subtleties that it might even be complicated for council members to understand, is another reason why state-level clarity is really important. And just to be clear to community, too, this is not an invitation to become scofflaws. This is, this is, this is, it's policy that has withstood legal challenges around the country and is bringing clarity to the law, as opposed to one city's going to do one thing, another city's going to do another thing. It's why, it's why advocating for this at the state level, I think, is, is really good policy for the city.
Okay. I guess my, just my only response or just like timing consideration is that, to me, at this point, it doesn't, it does seem worth adding in the future, assuming it gets vetted by staff, under public safety. I would be reluctant to call it one of our top priorities, just because, again, it doesn't relate as directly as the other items like getting money for Nicollet Avenue. And that makes me question a little bit if we should be scheduling, just like as a matter of procedure, a special meeting for an item that would just go underneath one of those subsidiary lists. But you feel strongly that if we did it in March, it would, or rather directing it for the 2025 platform is just not sufficient to make the difference that you think is necessary?
I think, I think it's not sufficient to make, to make the difference. And also what we're, we're asking the city to do and our staff to do is to, is to speak publicly and say, this is, this is in fact a priority for, for the city, for the state, and impact that conversation and impact it sooner, as opposed to later, for, for, for the city. But also, this, these are our legislative priorities. So for it to have the impact, that would be useful, I think, for our city and for the state. Doing it sooner as opposed to later, I think, is what I'm, what I'm asking for, I think, what, what I'd like this to do.
Okay. Then I would just put the feedback. I am fine with an additional meeting, if that's necessary, or we're doing an early meeting to bundle with an existing work session. And then I would request, since we are going to potentially, if everyone's in agreement, go out of our way to do it early, that, that the item could be on the same, ready to go on the same council agenda. And obviously, if we disagree, we can, we can turn it down at that point. But that we not have another two-week delay to get it on an agenda.
It's interesting that you bring up the county level, because I happened to have a meeting with a constituent today, and they were actually talking about how people have respect for the Richfield Police Department, but they're still hesitant to contact the police department because they're afraid of what's going to happen if the person gets turned over to the county. And so they, like I said, had immeasurable respect for the Richfield Police Department, but there was still that consideration of what happens at other levels. And so I do think we need to do more research and find out how that all interplays. I'm not an expert on this. I don't know how it all works. So I, I do think it's not something we can decide tonight, and it does need to be a work session where we have time to do that due process and do the research and find out what all the consequences and unintended consequences and that thing are for that. So, I mean, I'm, I think it sounds like a great idea that we should look into, but I realized my ignorance today when I was talking to this resident, and they were talking to me about what happens when, you know, if you take somebody to the county, you know, if somebody's arrested and all that. And I realized I didn't know the answer to that, and I didn't know how it was. And so again, they, they did say there was a great deal of trust in the Richfield Police, but that there was not necessarily that. They had questions about what happened at other levels. And so that would be the impact or the nexus. I would agree on that. So I'm fine with having another meeting. I don't have strong feelings about, you know, when and all that kind of stuff. But I do think we should look into more information, because there's a lot of information that we don't have. Councilmember Wayland?
I was just going to add to the conversation, I think there's also, Richfield is a little more geographically, geographically defined, that you often are crossing a freeway to leave. But in general, community members are not always, when they're out and about, well, one, they certainly don't stay within the confines of geographical Richfield and may or may not know if they're interacting with law enforcement, or even like the DMV or whatever. Like, there's an, there are plenty of people who have lived for decades and grew up in this government system that don't understand the nuances of who is the jurisdiction for what. And so expecting folks to navigate that, I think, is not realistic and another reason for support for this. The other thing I wanted to add, I appreciate that this is a discussion that normally would happen in a work session. Council meetings are a little more formal and can be clunkier, as we're experiencing for discussion. But also, if it's a matter of just finding time to do this, to me, it would seem like an option to have this just be a discussion at the council meeting, maybe that first one in February, that would be right before session starts. Obviously, we're missing the, the breakfast then, so that's coming up quickly. But just wanted to offer that, that if it's literally just finding a time, I would be open to a slight change in approach and just discussing it at a council meeting.
I did have one other question. There's been the suggestion of having a work session, and there's also been the suggestion of getting community input. Are you suggesting that we set aside part of that work session for people to give testimony, or is that going to be something that you would expect later after?
It would be, it would be ideal if we made an opportunity. I know both, both the Latino churches here in Richfield, both the ministers had expressed an interest in supporting this, sometimes on behalf of their, on their, their congregants, who sometimes feel less comfortable, kind of embedded in the, in the conversation. You know, I think it's an opportunity for people who don't always feel comfortable to come and speak. But I know that those are at least two individuals that have expressed an interest.
Is there any further feedback? All right. So we have two different things going on here. We have the actual motion for the proposed agenda that's there, and I have some things I want to say about that, too. But we also have this question about the, the work session. So I'm going to ask a procedural question. Is that something that we need to have a formal motion on, or just the discussion tonight is?
I can, Mayor and Council, my suggestion would be to act on the motion on the table, and then just have council give direction to the city manager about getting a meeting scheduled, whether it's a work session or a council agenda item, whatever the consensus is of the majority.
Okay. So at this point, let's go back to the main motion, and then we'll give direction to the city manager. As far as the main motion, I would want to thank you for clarifying the information about communication and the public access channels and the programming. I know there's been a lot of concern, and it's stated as one of our big objectives to not have, where is it? Here, to the top. One of our main things is that we support local decision-making authority and oppose statutory changes that erode local authority and decision-making. And it seems like the whole telecommunications thing has been like the poster child for taking away local authority. And we keep getting all these top-down decisions that's saying you must allow the right-of-way this to happen and that to happen. And there's some more things that we've expressed concern about at the federal level that are being proposed, that would totally take away any discretion that we have. So I appreciate that you've clarified that, and I do think that's really important. So thank you. Any other comments on the rest of the legislative agenda? Councilmember Wayland?
I just wanted to thank both staff for working on it this year, but also the work that staff has done over the last two or three years to update this process. I appreciate the community feedback that it's still, from the outside, can feel like just sort of a final product. But when I started on council like five years ago, I believe the first, the first legislative breakfast I went to, I, I got sent the list ahead of it and then just showed up, and that was it. And so I think, whereas this year, I'll share that I met with staff, I think as far back, maybe as like June, about one of the zoning questions. Again, in check-ins with the city manager, discussed some potential things that would come up. And then we do have this work session. We have this back and forth. There's clearly some changes that have been made based on feedback. And as for community members that want to weigh in, I would always encourage that you reach out and raise those concerns. And as with, with any input, we just will remind you that we hear from a lot of folks and that not, not just we don't always agree with each other or with input that's given, but it is just the nature of community that neighbors don't agree with each other. And so this is the best attempt at the most urgent, agreed-upon priorities, but certainly encourage community input, not just now, having seen this for this year, but throughout the year. If you feel like there's an issue that's impacting Richfield, that the decision-makers on that topic are the state legislature or the county commissioners, to reach out to us and talk through how we, how that could possibly be added for a future year.
All right. Any further comments on the proposed legislative positions? Councilmember Troutman?
Don't know for, throw other comments on the, on the priorities, but I do want to thank our city manager and particularly our chief for doing good work on this throughout, throughout the years. This is not a new policy to the city, but also for being flexible with this. Because I know, I'm just recognizing in advance that it's, it's, it's not an insignificant ask. So thank you for your leadership and your flexibility. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments on the proposed legislative priorities? All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the proposed legislative priorities for 2024. By adopting the legislative platform formally, the city council shows these priorities are in the best interest of the community and provides increased visibility for the issues. So as a procedural thing, we'll vote on this, and then we'll talk about giving direction to the city manager as far as the proposal for a work session. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We have adopted those legislative priorities. Now, as far as giving direction, is there someone that would like to make a statement? Or I don't know if it has to be a formal motion. Or City Manager Rodriguez, you had a question before we proceeded?
Mayor, I feel like, based on your discussion, I, I mean, I can summarize what I heard. I believe that there is consensus among the council to bring this back as soon as we can, by, before February, either at a work session or at a council meeting to have further discussion and consider amending it into the platform. That is what I thought I heard as consensus.
All right. Is that okay with everyone here? No objections? Okay. Councilmember Wayland?
I was just going to add, given the, the capacity concerns and the number of other things, I know in our upcoming annual look at new policies, part of that process is always staff being frank with us about what might need to be delayed or rearranged in order to reprioritize things. And so just, I'm also hearing, I agree that there's a clear desire to do this quickly, but also will give staff permission to come back and tell us that means that such and such is delayed a month or whatever needs to happen. And so just keep us posted on that, please.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Any other comments or questions? And we're fine with what the city manager has summarized? All right. Thank you. So then we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Nothing further to report. Thank you.
All right. And then we'll move on to claims and payroll.
I will move claims and payroll.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Is there any discussion or questions?
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of approving claims and payroll, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We've approved claims and payroll. Next, we'll move on to hats off to hometown hits. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the, the Friends of Woodlake and the Woodlake Nature staff for their New Year's Eve midnight walk. And it's, we recently had a work, a work session that's in our, in our notes. If people want to hear about the, the opportunities and the, the updates that are hopefully coming to Woodlake Nature Center, but it just continues to be a place for community, but not just during, during the day, but they really do a great job over the holidays to create opportunities for, for people to enjoy outside and enjoy each other. So thank you. Hats off.
I have no items tonight.
No items. All right. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I'd like to echo Councilman Troutman's comments about Woodlake Nature Center. I was one of those 1,300 people that participated in the New Year's Eve walk that evening. And I was kind of glad I got there earlier than later, because, you know, I did actually get a good parking spot compared to last year. But it was, they do put on a very good presentation, just not only in, you know, the staff going above and beyond, making sure everybody is safe on the trails and having an enjoyable evening. And the speakers that they have brought in for different various things, entertaining just not only adults, but keeping the kids active, too. So that's off to them.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland.
Just want to give a hats off from my son, who's 16 months old, had his first sledding experience at Roosevelt Park and approves. So thank you to the recreation and public work staff, everyone who does park planning and maintenance, that obviously there's the things that are very clearly designed to be played on, but appreciate the, the simple hills as well.
All right. Thank you. I wanted to do hats off to the staff, because I know there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes that people don't see, and they kind of, and we, I don't want to take that for granted. So I want to say thank you to the staff for all the hard work and all the things that are going on in the various departments, you know. And there's a lot of public-facing stuff, but there's an awful lot of behind-the-scenes thing. And I do think that I want to show appreciation for that as well. I also want to thank all the community volunteers. I've been out and about and seen so many things that are going on, because somebody stepped up and said, hey, I want to help with that. And it could be, you know, we hear a lot about things like Veep, but there's a lot of other volunteering that's going on, people helping with homework, help at the library, like we were just talking about at the work session and things like that. And so thank you to all the volunteers. And then particular thing is, I went onto the website today to look something up, and there was a reminder that if you're interested in signing up for the Citizens Police Academy, you need to register by the end of the day tomorrow. I was able to participate in that last year, and I, and it's one of those cases where you don't know what you don't know. And when I got there, I found out all the things I didn't know about, but I learned a great deal. And it was very open for community participation. It's going to be happening from February 8th through March 14th. It's a free six-week program, and it's Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And like I said, it was, it was really an eye-opening experience for me, and I learned a lot. So I would encourage people to sign up for that, but the deadline is approaching, so you have to sign up by tomorrow if you're going to be signing up. And then finally, I want to do a hats off to Rachel from the Sustainability Committee. I had all kinds of questions, because I know we've had organized hauling, and we've got like a yearly contract where there's a 3% increase. And then there were questions about, well, why did this change or that change? And she was very patient in explaining it. And more information is on the website, if you want to look that up. You can also go on social media, and there's posts on that. But there's complexities to things like the market rate for recyclable materials and all of that. And so I won't get into that tonight. But I do appreciate the patient explanations, and I would encourage people to go on the website. And if you look under, I think it's recycling and garbage, if I'm correct, you'll, but if you, if you look under recycling, there's a whole page on it that explains all of it. So I would encourage people to check into that. And I want to say thank you to Rachel for for doing that. Is there anything else we want to add for hats off? All right, then, as, if there is no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adjourned the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we stand adjourned.